Hudson County View live on a cut and I'm your host for what you see is what you get and what you don't is better yet, John R. Highness. And we're going to talk, of course, the latest and greatest in Hudson County news. So you know, quite a few interesting things on the governmental side. So first of all, you know, we talked about that Center Pompano project, I don't know how many dozens of times in this program. And you know, you guys remember in December, that tax abatement for the KRE group was approved by a six three vote by the Jersey City Council. Now the council is going to consider a new endeavor. And that's an initiative to bring a new special improvement district that could raise up to $2 million for the Pompano project. So going to tell you about that. And what is going on there? We got to have an initial vote on Thursday. Also going to talk a little bit about just real quick, a public safety meeting at Hoboken. Of course, we talked again on this program about what happened on Halloween. Of course, there was that terrible assault where one poor woman was knocked unconscious, another man was attacked. So you know, still a little bit of unrest in the city about that. Some residents are definitely upset. So going to tell you about the details there. And of course, we got plenty of political drama as always. We got Jersey City Mayor Steven Fuller, of course, a Democratic candidate for governor. He announced two new assembly running mates on his ticket. And that's over in Bergen County, the 34th Legislative District, or sorry, excuse me, that's Essex County. So we're going to talk about that. And a few things happening for 2025. You know, we know that a late a little progressive activist who ran for county executive last year, she'll be running for Ward E. We know that Jersey City Ward D Councilman Youssef Saleh seeking reelection as he announced this morning. And I'll be speaking with him shortly. All that and a whole lot more right after this word from our sponsors.
No one plans on heart disease, but everyone should have a plan for it. We help patients of all lifestyles and medical histories plan for healthy hearts. We offer convenient screenings without judgment, hundreds of preventive programs, and women's heart specialists. And we're the largest cardiac surgery program in New Jersey. Make plans for a healthy heart with RWJ Barnabas Health. Let's be healthy together.
Newport, the luxury waterfront community on the Hudson River offers a quality of life you deserve in one of our many high-rise towers. With amenities such as the onsite Newport Path, light rail, Newport Town Square, three playgrounds, Dog Run, upscale restaurants, retail giants like Kohl's, JCPenney, Macy's, and Target. Morton Williams and Acme Supermarket are just outside your front door. A health and fitness center, skating rink, and medical facilities are also on site. Enjoy the New York skyline from our waterfront and various parks. Manhattan is just one path stop away, or a quick ride through the Holland Tunnel. Nursery and private elementary schools, all on site. 12-screen movie theater at the Newport Center Mall. Looking to visit? Stay at the West Inter Marriott Hotel. For more information, visit us at NewportNJ.com. Make lasting memories to cherish forever. It's incredible. It's you. Newport. Live like you want.
Hudson County View live on a cut, John R. Highness. So real quick, I mean, I know a lot of people have gotten all they could stomach regarding the national election. But I think it needs to be mentioned here that if you watch MSNBC and NBC, I'm sure you know New Jersey's own Steve Cordaki. And he there said that Donald Trump, of course, our president-elect now, did 18 points better in Hudson County than he did in 2020. So just, you know, very quickly, that Joe Biden won there by 46 points in 2020. And on Tuesday, last Tuesday, it was 28 points. So again, that's a swing of 18. He called that one of those giant core counties that New Jersey, the Democratic Party relies on. And that's a massive, massive shift. And again, that speaks to Trump's gains that we really have seen with Hispanic voters. So yeah, those Hispanic voters over in North Hudson, Union City, West New York, and North Bergen, you know, really strong numbers for President-elect Trump. So just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that, if in case they missed it. But on to the current stuff. So let's talk about the special improvement district. So you know, you guys, a lot of people were a little surprised by this. I mean, it only really came up once. If you remember that Journal Square Community Association meeting, it was a marathon meeting. We had dozens of people, standing room only, right before the final vote on the tax abatement for the Pompano. This did come up briefly. The mayor, of course, that's Steven Fuller brought it up. And at the time, he said, this could bring in $1 to $2 million in additional revenue for this cultural arts center as they've deemed it. So he made this long post on X that I think sums most of it up. He said, when the Jersey City Council approved moving forward on Center Pompano by Jersey City, we discussed instituting a special improvement district on the new high-rise buildings at Journal Square to help fund the project and community arts programs there. When I presented to the council of the community, we showed a conservative framework with a Cid bringing in $1 million per year. And the actual proposed district that we are moving forward will end up yielding closer to $2 million as proposed. So there's a little more, but I think you get the picture there. So obviously, this is going to be a very expensive endeavor. And you know, they're going to need every little bit of help they could get. It's unclear how much the state's going to get involved. Obviously, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority cut this off in the summer. And so now here we are. And again, as I talked about briefly at the beginning, there's a 30-year abatement for 808 Pavonia Ave. That went to the KRE group. That was a six-three vote. Councilman Bajieato, Solomon, and Gilmore voted no. I would imagine they're not going to support this either, but we'll see what happens at tomorrow's regular meeting. We'll have a little story later on about what happened at the caucus yesterday. Other than that, I think it's worth mentioning a couple things. So first of all, the second reading won't be any earlier than the December 11th council meeting, just in case some changes need to be made. And also stakeholders, particularly property owners in that area, need to be notified. And this is all coming from the ordinance itself. And a nonprofit known as the Cultural Arts Management Corporation will be the public entity that runs the Cid. And they will have a board of trustees that consists of seven people. And one will be appointed by the mayor, one will be a council designee, it will be the director of Housing Economic Development and Commerce, or his or her designee. And then they will pick the remaining four members of the board amongst themselves. So remember that council meeting is tomorrow, 6 o'clock, and it'll stream live on Microsoft Teams. So moving to the Miles Square City for a moment, you know, I talked a little bit about this arrest in Church Square Park, Troy Timberlake, 31 years old. You know, again, he assaulted that nanny, knocked her unconscious, and then he attacked another man. You know, a GoFundMe page was started for the nanny, and it's done exceptionally well. I mean, they've raised at least $17,000 to date. But nonetheless, you know, this is not something people in the Miles Square City are used to seeing. So there's, you know, definitely some dialogue about them being really disappointed and upset. And so there's this public safety meeting, which you typically don't see right before the council meeting. That's going to be 5:30 on Monday. That's City Hall, 94 Washington Street. And if you read the NICSIL alert from the city of Hoboken that says, don't forget to enter on the Newark side of the street, the front entrance is still closed as they do some repairs on that frontal facade of the building. So this was originally supposed to be actually one week ago, but due to the sudden passing of Council President Jen Giattino, of course, her funeral is just either just ending or just ended. You know, certainly, we want to wish our condolences rest in peace. You know, I went to the visitation. Very sad. You know, of course, our thoughts and prayers are still with the family and friends. But you know, unfortunately, the beat must go on for the city. And that's going to be, again, right before the city council meeting on Monday. So tentatively, we're looking at a public safety meeting from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. And then the council meeting starting at 7 o'clock. That might be a little ambitious, but we'll see how it plays out. Now, on the state level, again, we're talking about Jersey City Mayor Steven Fuller. He's announced two new running mates on the legislative side. That's the State Assembly. And again, we're talking about the 34th Legislative District, and he's recruited Belleville Councilman Frank Velez III, and former East Orange Councilwoman Brittany Claybrooks. So you know, obviously, these are not names that Hudson County residents are typically used to hearing. So we heard from the mayor, and he said Frank and Brittany have been successful even without having resources to compete with the big political bosses in New Jersey. The resource gap is about to change, and I think they will be successful not only in this campaign, but in helping to change NJ. Now, Velez previously served on the Board of Education, and he was also a district staff assistant for the late US Rep. Bill Pasquale. And then with Claybrooks, you probably mostly know her as the North Jersey Political Director for US Representative Andy Kim, of course, is now our US Senator-elect. She actually left that campaign a few months early to run for Congress in the 10th district. She finished fifth out of 10 in that July 16 special election. Of course, the Congresswoman ended up being LaMondica McIver. That's the Newark Council President. And if you look through this list, you know, Fuller has recruited, you know, in Essex, in Atlantic, of course, on his home turf of Hudson. He's got about a dozen running mates across the state now, as far as the assembly races go. And it's worth noting, if you guys haven't seen or heard, that US Representatives Josh Gottheimer and Mikey Sherrill are announcing in the coming days. Gottheimer looking to announce on Friday, and then Sherrill on Monday, of course, right before the League of Municipalities in Atlantic City. So with that, we're going to take a quick break. When I come back, I'll be with Jersey City Ward D Councilman Youssef Saleh.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments, and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, Jersey City. Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all fates and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory on site. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments, and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hoppin', North Arlington. Visit us on the net.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights. Your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments. Carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants. All major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets is saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets. Price to fit your budget. Installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Comprehensive healthcare is here, here, and here. RWJ Barnabas Health is healing, enhancing, and investing in Hudson County with its two newest locations. Hoboken and Exchange Place. Within walking distance or accessible by mass transit, our locations combine convenience with primary and specialty care, including cardiology, women's health, orthopedics, cancer care, and more. Let's be healthy together.
Hudson County View live on a cut, John R. Highness. And as I mentioned a few moments ago, today I'm joined with Jersey City Ward D Councilman Youssef Saleh, who's joining us remotely. Councilman, thanks for making the time.
Absolutely. It's an honor and pleasure to be here back in the Thunderdome with you, John Highness.
Thank you very much. So look, obviously, I appreciate you again making this part of your campaign rollout, you know, looking for your second full term. And you announced that a few hours ago. And now here we are. So you know, for those that may have missed the announcement, just tell us why you think you deserve and why you desire four more years on the governing body here in Jersey City?
When I came into office, you know, it was a very, very dark time. Essentially, you know, the late Council Michael Union had just passed away from the coronavirus. You know, as the son of immigrants, born and raised in Jersey City Heights, I stepped up for my community. I left my corporate job to serve my neighbors, my family, my friends, get out of a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. So for the first two years, you know, we were just getting through that. We were redoing Central Avenue. Ultimately, we're trying to build on the progress that we've made. Now that we're fully out of COVID, we are going to continue to revamp and grow Jersey City Heights and make it greener, more sustainable, and productive for all.
All right, very good, Councilman. So as you know, the Heights Ward D, which me and you both know well, this is the most crowded field right now. I mean, you have three other declared candidates, and you have one that's clearly waiting in the rings as a campaign website ready. And you could potentially have two more, you know, Council President Joyce Waterman and former Board of Education President Musa Malik. They haven't announced for Ward D yet, but I'm assuming they're going to run full tickets as of today. So how does that make you feel anticipating a crowded field next year?
I have seen this movie before. And it was during the pandemic, when I had like five people run against me. And I had to run when no one could see my face. I couldn't shake anyone's hands. There was no parades. And basically, you had to, no one could see your face, shake your hand. You couldn't kiss any babies. It was, you know, the most difficult campaign you could ever run. And we won, we won with a resounding 6,400 votes. And then the next year, we won with the same percentage, 55%. So we're looking to build up on that coalition of people in the Heights, old and new. We're bringing everyone into this movement.
All right, gotcha. Now, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but one of your opponents, Patrick Ambrosi, in response to your announcement, well, he had a lot to say, and none of it was particularly positive. And basically, he said that you're a shaman. You haven't really done anything for the constituents in Ward D. So what's your reaction to that?
My opposition, whoever they are, I don't think that they are, you know, speaking to real residents outside of their own home. So they, you, there is tangible results that you could see, feel, and touch, you know, whether it's the Central Avenue streetscape, whether it's Mosquito Park, Leonard Gordon Park, which was in a stalemate until I came on the scene and worked with, you know, the different warring parties and brought peace to Mosquito Park, or Riverview Park, you know, all of these projects that went, went under my administrative, under my tenure. Pay transparency was signed by the State Assembly, was signed by the State Senate, and is about to get signed by Governor Murphy. Anyone that's looking for a job is going to be thankful that pay transparency was first brought in Jersey City, and now is going to be all across the state of New Jersey. And we need that kind of leadership now more than ever, you know, given the results. So we need to have strong ideals here in Jersey City that help working-class Americans.
All right, very good. Now, of course, there's been a lot of speculation who you're going to run with, if anybody. And for a number of reasons, a lot of people think the most likely landing spot is that ticket of Ward D Councilman James Solomon. So is that your desire? Or what are you thinking on that front?
I think I'm running as independent right now. There are conversations, I've had conversations with every camp. And essentially, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to running with Councilman Solomon. I see that there's a lot of overlap in terms of our ideals, whether it's right to counsel, or the streetscape project we just did on Cole Street. We've partnered on a lot of things and seen real substantive results together. So that's not something I rule out. That's to say, right now, I'm going to run as independent, and we'll see, we'll see where this goes, you know?
Okay, I got it. And just, you know, you and Councilman Solomon have come a long way. I mean, you just talked about how guys have worked together on, you know, a number of different projects. There's a lot of overlap with Ward's D and E. But as you recall, in 2020, he actually voted against your appointment, not for personal reasons, but he just didn't think it was transparent enough, and he thought it was too rushed. So tell me about the development of that relationship a bit.
I think the, the trauma of the once-in-a-lifetime pandemic that we went through, and just trying to service the residents, and finding a lot of, I'm the youngest member on the council, and you know, he's also one of the youngest members. And we're, you know, when my office and his office communicate, we find that a lot of our work ethic and ideals match up. Like, we just want to help the people of Jersey City. At the end of the day, he's in the weeds like me. So we've developed a mutual respect when it comes to governance and trying to ultimately bring good government to the people.
Very good, Councilman. Don't go anywhere. Ladies and gentlemen, don't go anywhere either. We're just going to take a quick break. We'll be right back.
No one plans on heart disease, but everyone should have a plan for it. We help patients of all lifestyles and medical histories plan for healthy hearts. We offer convenient screenings without judgment, hundreds of preventive programs, and women's heart specialists. And we're the largest cardiac surgery program in New Jersey. Make plans for a healthy heart with RWJ Barnabas Health. Let's be healthy together.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments, and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, Jersey City. Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all fates and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory on site. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments, and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hoppin', North Arlington. Visit us on the net.
Hudson County View live on a cut, John R. Highness. And I'm still here with Jersey City Ward D Councilman Youssef Saleh. So Councilman, you know, in your announcement today, you talked a lot about some things that you're proud of, that you've been able to sign your name on, and of course, spearhead for the Heights. But I'd just like to hear a little bit about what you'd like to do going forward. You know, could you clue us in on some initiatives you'd like to be a part of if you do have the pleasure of serving for an additional four years?
I have a lot, actually. So I would like to, from an infrastructure standpoint, redo the playgrounds within the Heights. I've gotten a lot of messages from parents that like to see some shade apparatus above the playgrounds to protect their children while they're playing. So we'll redo the playground at Riverview. We'll install phase two for Mosquito Park and secure funding for that. Pershing Field Dog Park, we want that to happen, and have swipe access for the dogs. So you register your dogs as per state law, and then you would get swipe access to get into the dog park. A lot of dog owners say that the dogs get the diseases when there are vaccinated and unvaccinated dogs that are mixing. From a legislative standpoint, I'd like to introduce legislation for AI when it comes to how it can be utilized. As you can see with Kroger, they gave different price points for different customers with the utilization of AI, and that was a big, big scandal. So we on the municipal level have to protect against that kind of price gouging or price manipulation. I'd like to see more regulation on EV tolls in the wake of the 2026 FIFA World Cup. You'll start to see more of the, they're like drones, but taxi drones. So they're looking to roll that out. I had a meeting with FAA. I know I didn't speak much about it because it was very, very contentious. But there needs to be stronger regulation on that point. I'd like to see blockchain for birth certificates and wedding certificates and death certificates because it's an immutable record. I'd like to see a revamp of Chapter 260, which I'm working with Councilman Solomon on, and also an accessibility committee that I am also working with the council on. So those are a few things that I'm trying to do in the next term. Obviously, filling the potholes, redoing the streets, and separating the stormwater and the sewers is also going to be a priority, as well as planting more trees. And also a bike lane in the Heights that's protected.
All right. So there's a lot to work with there. Let's, but let's talk about this bike lane. Obviously, we've heard from Bike JC, State Streets JC, some people that aren't affiliated with either group, but just tend to ride their bikes as opposed to use a car. And you know, they want this bike lane. They're very adamant that the state funding, the NJDOT funding could be lost. So what do you think is the best course of action here?
I think the best course of action was, was what the engineers did, which was to apply for an extension. And they have sent it to the NJDOT. Now, the pilot was supposed to identify some of the issues that came up with the proposed bike lane from the Bike Lane Master Plan in 2018, which, as you know, I wasn't part of the council at that time. I'm very data-driven and fact-based about this. Like, if you do a pilot, you have to address the issues that came up in the pilot. And I, I want to get to yes, right? But we have to fix some of these issues. So the NJDOT is looking over some of the proposed fixes to those issues. It's not in my office at this point, and the extension has been granted by the NJ, by the NJDOT to the city of Jersey City. So we're going to continue to work with the community. I've never forced anything down anybody's throat. I'm working with the community to do this. I, like, same thing with the parking deck. The Central SID said, you know, no go on the parking deck in terms of like it being privately owned. There were some issues. So we didn't push that. And same thing with this. We want the community's buy-in with, with everything that we do.
So the extension, how long is that good for?
Six months.
Okay, so that would be over in... What's that?
I think that's enough time for us to, you know, get it revamped and put it out before the community.
Okay, so when would that expire?
Uh, they said it was several weeks ago, so I'm guessing April-ish?
All right. So somewhere towards the end of the first quarter, beginning of second quarter. And the parking deck that you just mentioned, it's funny, I was just going to ask you about that. So is that project dead, or what's the status there?
So we have the assigned developer. And essentially, what happened was, there were some issues regarding the height. There were some issues regarding the number of parking spaces. So the height, some people don't like 10 stories. But you need, if you're going to bond for the parking deck, you need to have a tax base to offset the bond payments that you're going to have to make. Like, you can't just, where are you going to get the money from to pay for the IOUs that you pull out to, to build a parking deck? The Central Avenue SID wanted 450 spots. I don't think that's required. I think that we could do 400 spots and we'll be okay over there. And we're still, we're going to pick it up in the next term. So that's something else that we're going to work on as soon as I get reelected.
Councilman, thanks so much. Always a pleasure. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, folks, don't go anywhere. We're just going to take a quick break. We'll be right back.
Newport, the luxury waterfront community on the Hudson River offers a quality of life you deserve in one of our many high-rise towers. With amenities such as the onsite Newport Path, light rail, Newport Town Square, three playgrounds, Dog Run, upscale restaurants, retail giants like Kohl's, JCPenney, Macy's, and Target. Morton Williams and Acme Supermarket are just outside your front door. A health and fitness center, skating rink, and medical facilities are also on site. Enjoy the New York skyline from our waterfront and various parks. Manhattan is just one path stop away, or a quick ride through the Holland Tunnel. Nursery and private elementary schools, all on site. 12-screen movie theater at the Newport Center Mall. Looking to visit? Stay at the West Inter Marriott Hotel. For more information, visit us at NewportNJ.com. Make lasting memories to cherish forever. It's incredible. It's you. Newport. Live like you want.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights. Your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments. Carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants. All major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets is saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets. Price to fit your budget. Installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Hudson County View live on a cut, John R. Highness. Few more before we let you folks call it a week. So you guys saw yesterday that progressive activist, A Late a Little, will be running for the Ward E Council seat. This is interesting. Obviously, a lot of people have been waiting and watching downtown. The reason being, they wanted to see what Councilman Solomon was going to do. Obviously, he's very strong down there, has been able to get the vote out at a pretty exceptional rate, if I say so myself. And right now, we have one declared candidate, well, we did have one declared candidate in Alexander Hamilton, that former Board of Education trustee. He's running with Council President Joyce Waterman. Now we have A Late a Little running as an independent. Of course, she's someone that has had the backing of Solomon in the past, both when she ran for freeholder in 2020 and Hudson County Executive last year. While those weren't successful endeavors, she did have a pretty robust turnout in Ward E. So, and of course, no shortage due to Councilman Solomon's efforts in those races as well. She said, I don't take money from big developers or special interests. Our movement is people-powered, so our neighbors can trust that I'll work for them, not the powerful. From tenant protections to flood prevention, I have spent years advocating for our neighborhoods and fighting to ensure Jersey City is a place where everyone can thrive. And she said, your platform is going to include a heavy focus on tenant protections, climate resilience, and transparent government, with a focus on eliminating wasteful spending, increasing government accountability, prioritizing resources for community programs. So she's got a campaign kickoff going on at the Hudson Hound. It's the speakeasy portion of the bar. And that's at 8 Erie Street. That's 2:30 PM on Saturday. All are welcome to attend. And there's some RSVP options, anywhere ranging from free to $1,000 ticket. So you know, that's on the website if you guys want to take a look, if you have any interest. And look, this is obviously a coveted seat. You know, of course, we remember there was a time there was a Ward E Downtown Councilman by the name of Steven Fuller. And of course, now we have James Solomon. So this is a seat that, you know, is a pretty big deal in Jersey City. And again, Little is somebody that has donated to Solomon. She went to his campaign kickoff. They've had a good work relationship in the past. For now, no one's made any announcements on her joining a ticket. We'll see what happens in the coming days and weeks. Now, as we continue, more of weeks. Now, as we continue, more of a clerical note, but I think it's kind of a big one at the same time on the governmental front. So, the Jersey City Council tomorrow is going to vote on bringing a rec center to each ward. So, obviously, there's six wards. That would be six rec centers. And this is being spearheaded by Ward A Councilwoman Denise Ridley, and the administration via Mayor Stephen Philip. And specifically, what they're going to vote on is an ordinance to kickstart the design phase of this project by designating a $467,000 contract to FC3 Architects. Now, the initial phase will include designing a new facility at Bayside Park in Ward A, gutting the former Joseph Cottler Senior Center in Ward D, and aligning it with the youth recreation in the Jersey City Heights. And the third location is going to be at the Boiler Building in the Powerhouse Arts District. Of course, that's downtown Ward D. A couple other things before we let you jump. Make the Road New Jersey on Saturday had Jersey City rally, where activists that elected vowed to fight Trump. Probably the most surprising appearance there was Attorney General Matt Platten. A lot of people are speculating he's running for something in 2025, and this is only going to fuel the fire. Part of his remarks said, "We have been in difficult moments before. We were here eight years ago. A lot of us were at events like this. 77% of the lawsuits filed against the Trump administration was successful." Of course, a lot of people were happy to hear that. And he said, "As the people's lawyer, I have to protect your rights. If the federal government wants to undermine your rights, use the power of the highest office in the lands to violate laws, we will be there for you." So, definitely interesting. Looks like he's a guy to keep an eye on. And beyond that, I mean, I think we pretty much covered it, folks. So, thanks for tuning in. We're actually not going to be here next week due to the League of Municipalities, and then the following week it's Thanksgiving. So, we'll see you in December. Take it easy. I just hit Enter.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because it was already up, but it wasn't logged in, so I just hit Enter.
All right, now we know.
Think everything about it. Well, as anyone could have hoped for.
Yeah, it was nice. Oh, and Pat, Salas says, "No, thank you, thank you, thank you for letting..."